Okay, this time I'd like to call the audit on Lemur's the planning board for August 19th to 19:00, 6:30. We have a continued public hearing for definitive subdivision approval for Mary Avenue extension, 1157 Ria Main Street.
You'll note that the applicant has made a request by email on August 13th to have an extension to the October meeting.
Okay.
The last meeting in October.
November.
They want to extend until November, but they want permission to have their decision period extended to November, but they want to be heard instead of October meeting.
Okay. What's the date for that?
It is October 7th. Oh, the last meeting is October 21st.
October 21st. Okay, well, the meeting is open. Is there anyone here concerned on Mary Avenue? Give anybody an opportunity to speak if anyone else here concerns on Mary Avenue. Okay. Motion would be in honor to continue the hearing to October 21st at 6:30.
Second motion. Second.
What's the date, I'm sorry?
October 21st, 6:30, per request of the applicant. Any discussion of the board members? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote say no, motion carries. Are you going to mean, okay, call to audit.
Are we, are we going to, you're not going to open?
6:30. 6:35.
It's only 6:30.
6:32, so I gotta wait.
Patrick Perle.
Here.
Fred Fredericks.
Yeah.
Paul Weiser.
Here.
South George Cunningham, excused. Johnson.
Yeah.
Carol Vittoriosa.
Here.
Thomas Carrigan.
Yeah.
Okay. Minutes for July 15th, 2019. Have we got the minutes?
Yep.
Review them.
Yep.
Any discussion?
No.
Do I have a motion? Thank you, Bill.
Motion made by Paul, taken by Fred to accept the minutes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote say no. Motion carries.
Say motion for July 22nd.
A motion made for July 22nd, taken by Fred. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Here and now, vote for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote say no. Motion carries. Good job. And...
Did you want to schedule the 99 Elm Street?
Yeah, special permanent approval for Watts Plant Protection District for 99, 109 Elm Street.
909.
909. That has to be scheduled.
This is an application for development in the water supply protection district. They want to construct a pool house, a driveway, and a retaining wall.
Okay. So that would be for...
It's actually the 16th of September because of...
What else do we have left?
We have nothing yet.
Okay, so I can make a motion scheduled for 9/16 at 6:30.
9/16. I have a motion made in second for 9/16 at 6:30. Any discussion? Here and now, I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote say no. Motion carries. Here and now, for approval for 16 Field Road.
Okay, I will just hold them a little bit while I look at the presented. In front of you, there's a memo. I did a review. And since comparing us with the building inspector, the building inspector trumps our department on interpretation of setbacks. And I had suggested that the back, the rear setback was not met. But the building inspector interprets it differently, and he believes the rear setback is met to the property or not.
So specifically, this is a lot on the corner of Field Road, I'm sorry, for the right-hand building, here in engineering. It's on the corner of Field Road and Abbott Avenue. There's an existing house on the property, and it's the intention of the owner to create two additional building lots. In this location right here, we have a setback shown as 23.9.
Yep.
23.9. So in looking at this from the front edge point of view, here's the front edge here, that's along the cul-de-sac and main roadway. There would be a side lot line going off in each direction, and then as you come around the house, the front left corner, we interpreted as a side. The back left, we said this line is the side for the front, it would be a side for the rear, for the rear corner. But what we did, we put it at 31 feet, just in case the building inspector felt that that was a 30-foot setback in that location. So he's now said he agrees that is a side, so either way, it's acceptable now.
Where is the driveway for each of these?
This is here.
This is the driveway here, there's going to be driveways, that's existing.
So they'll share the driveway?
No, 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 no. They'll each have their own driveway, probably off of either Abbott, and this one will have, this one will have it off of Abbott. Lot 3 will have it off of Abbott. Lot 2 will either have it off of Abbott or off of Field.
Oh, these are lots are on Abbott, okay.
Great.
You have a question, Carol?
Well, no, I would make a motion to endorse its A&R plan. If there was a side, if there was a setback violation, that would be the applicant's concern.
True.
Just wants to know what Field Road is.
So if you go, there's a light there, and Linda, you go down, this is where the KPD is?
Oh, okay.
Okay, this goes up to 2, so take a right.
Kind of a cross, we've done the tellies.
Yeah, that's over there somewhere.
Okay, so I have a motion from Carol to endorse. Do I have a second?
Second.
Taken by Paul. Any further discussion? Here and now, I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote say no. Motion carries. Thank you.
We'll have it ready for you tomorrow.
Yeah. Well, we'll let them... Okay. I'll open up the hearing, continue public hearing, but definitive subdivision approval for Meadowland at Willard Street, along the non-leaked side of Willard Street, including number 671 of Willard Street. Shall I have representative of the petition?
With the applicant, here in engineering, Bill Heedigan, and Chris Anderson as well. Linda is in back, along with her mother, I forget her first name.
Geraldine.
Geraldine. So at the last meeting, we let the board review the covenant. And at the time, and looking at the LATV video, it was concern over whether the covenant of the homeowners association was covering enough. John, we shared experience with homeowners association, that they covered everything. In this particular case, the homeowners association is limited to the sewer force main and certain components of the drainage system, specifically the detention basin, the underground storage chamber systems, of which there's ameasment around both of those components, along with the water quality units for the drainage system. Upon the completion of construction and the preparation of ad build plans, we would submit all the information to the city, and the city would accept the main roadways, sidewalks, any improvements within the roadways, but their acceptance would exclude those elements that we just spoke of. So the homeowners association therefore has to take care of those components indefinitely. Okay? So I think in the previous thing, I think your experience with them is that they covered the roads, they covered everything, but they're ahead of them in this particular case. So that document was adjusted for a conversation that you and I had with the applicant's attorney, made some changes. That was then forwarded to KPD Law, and KPD Law and the attorney are really, at this point from my understanding, is that they're really just dotting i's and crossing t's. There's no real discussion that's above the language, and no one's, everyone's agreeing on the language, that the lawyers know what they're supposed to write in there. So at this point, that's really the last element for the project. I was hoping to have that emailed out to everybody today, as being, as having the KPD Law attorney saying she was all, he or she was all set with it. We haven't seen that as of yet, but that's my understanding, that those documents are near completion.
Okay, so I started waiting for that.
Right. And under the circumstances, I think that no matter what happens, the final version of those documents is going to have to have all the names put into it, the recording information for the plans, and the approval documents, et cetera. So we would be willing to have that at a condition of approval, that the attorneys, both for the city and our client, work out those details prior to endorsement, and that would allow them to finish up their work and not be too rushed for the project.
Okay. Do you have anything else you wish to add at this time?
I think all the other items have been reviewed by the different departments. I think we've addressed all of the questions and comments within the comment response letters. And I think that that was the last piece.
Okay. Open up for the audience, do I have any people? Okay. Gentleman in the back?
Yes, I...
Please identify yourself and stand up.
Peter Latchis, 22 Demasa Drive. The question I have on the project is, the meeting was canceled twice, and the last we heard, the board was suggesting to move the road, primary road, abutting in the Crabtree Lane. And we don't know if that's been done yet, and we haven't had any meeting discussing how the plan would look. So what am I going to talk about? I don't know.
Plan is last revised on April 11th.
So the roadway was shifted once, where it was, driveway was coming up and it was going to be, well, the road was coming up and it would have had headlights going into an abutting property.
Right.
We shifted the road towards Crabtree to run along basically the property line between the two buildings, and that has not changed since our last meeting.
Okay.
That location.
So that hasn't changed?
Nope. And we've actually had a...
Well, we should look at it a little...
Development review for the meeting as well, going over these changes and that.
Yeah.
I think that that's...
Oh, I'll put that up.
Yeah. Put it up higher.
Yeah, put it up higher if you can. Okay. And what was the change that was made? Just pointed out on the board so we understand those.
During the initial hearings, the original roadway made a straight shot along the, this is going to be the eastern property line, and directly made a contact with Willard Street as part of various reviews by the board, and abutters and various department had to relocate the drive, so that the center line essentially lined up with the property line that's shared between four Crabtree Lane and 664 Willard Street. That way, we're eliminating the right headlights there from the roadway onto the house at 664 Willard Street.
Can I answer your question?
No, not at all.
Don't want to answer your question.
The reason being, the board suggested they abut Crabtree Lane for safety, they had better vision up there, and...
I can't hear you. Please stand up and speak up.
All right.
Please stand up.
I'll talk. Yes, the last two meetings, it was brought out that the board suggested they move a line Crabtree Lane and the main road out of this complex, and it wasn't done twice. So this is where we are now, that hasn't been talked about. Board suggested it for safety. So maybe the board has questions.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Bill.
That was discussed very early on in the preliminary process of the project, and we don't own the land directly across from Crabtree, so we have to work with the land that we own, and we're actually acquiring a second parcel to try to make this configuration work. We do have the emergency egress location adjacent or near Crabtree, but that's actually not going to be functioning for general purposes of traffic. This configuration was reviewed by the DPW, and this was their preferred, with the change of the shift was reviewed, referred, I'm sorry, was preferred over the previous one. We can't, we can't do something with land we don't own. So that's why it doesn't align with Crabtree.
Okay.
I'd like to comment on that. The board said they would waiver that, because it would be safer to put a line Crabtree. This is what the meeting was, said. The board suggested this, because they get better view, I mean, the board members would know what they said.
I'm going to have to lean on some of the board meetings, because I wasn't here for that meeting.
So I don't recall the board saying that they would waive the 125-foot offset, and that's not a waiver that we've requested. This alignment complies with 125-foot offset requirement. So I think this meets the regulations of the, of the city with respect to the offset from Crabtree and the proposed roadway.
We definitely did have that conversation.
Yeah.
When we had the site visit, you could see that the original proposal was not exact.
But you had the original road...
Yeah, it's been moved from Walter's house, right? Robert Walter's house.
Right, so we moved it towards Crabtree.
Right.
But we are not, we are not less than 125 feet from Crabtree.
It was, it was right in front of Mr. Verwood's house.
Yeah, but we moved it from there.
That way. But we discussed a number of options, too.
Well, just because we discuss options doesn't mean that that's the way we're going to go, that we're getting into the final point.
I didn't realize that. All I'm saying is the two, the two meetings were canceled, and the one before that, the board was concerned with safety, and they said they could waiver that. So that was an option the board was looking at.
Okay.
And I don't know how the board feels now.
We had talked about doing one way in, one way out.
Right.
We talked about aligning with the street.
Then I liked that.
But there've been a lot of discussions, there's probably been 20, all kinds of additional options that have been brought forward. Okay?
I heard. No, I'm not trying to, I didn't, I mean...
I mean, there was an option to have two roads, okay?
Well, the road he's talking about was going to be a fire road, the main road would be...
Two roads.
And it could be...
I'm saying that the two roads next to each other, there were, and I said, there's a lot of options that were made.
Okay.
Suggestions, because people make a suggestion.
I'm not saying that's final.
At this point, this is the final that we see here.
Okay, you're saying that's the final.
We have some questions.
Go ahead.
Mr. Heedigan, so you said after discussions with DPW, can you just remind me the reasons that they, that they approved this?
The single, the single road access was what?
I just need a, my memory refilled.
They would have the multiple turns coming out of that one side of the road, which we had two. We originally, to bring back the old, old plan.
You're right.
We originally came in with a, during the preliminary process, with two roads coming in, one road basically looping back around and coming out. And the process, through the process of the preliminary plan, we reduced that to one way, one roadway being constructed, and the second being constructed as an emergency egress. Okay? And the reason for the preference of that was that the number of turning movements on the street would be reduced with the same volume of traffic.
If I may, help clarify the situation. Standing there on the property, looking towards Crabtree Lane, it's clear that the closer the street is to Crabtree Lane, the better the line of sight is coming around that corner, and the farther away from one of Lemur's biggest trees, which is right on the street, across the street, so it gets farther away from that. I think some of the discussion talked about flip-flopping as best as possible the actual main road and the access road.
The fire road.
Which is not illustrated on the planes there.
And there are three eight-point turns, too. Then you get in, out, around. So with respect to that, the only way you could flip-flop the two would be to put us in violation of 125-foot offset requirement. So this, by moving the road towards Crabtree, we've got better line of sight in the direction that you're speaking, we actually have better line of sight probably in both directions. Okay, so that's safer, and we still are maintaining the emergency egress.
In this location or close to the Crabtree? Because the line of sight is definitely better the farther the road gets to Crabtree.
Sort of pull it...
Just because you can't see, kind of, the corner's kind of blocked, just because of the, it goes up a hill a little bit right there.
And if you remember during the previous hearing through the chair, because of the location of this, if we were to relocate the roadway into the area that's the, so emergency access, the ability to get the grading to work through this area and to meet safe grades and changes in grades and everything like that around that intersection would be very difficult, too impossible to maintain, especially since we are bordered by an electric police network, which we can't do significant work with it.
Can we discuss that as well?
So there were a lot of options that were discussed. We've gone back and forth on two entrances, one entrance, moving the entrance from one location to another. I think that the biggest concern of one of the abutters anyways was this location relative to the headlights, as well as I think the second abutter to the east of the project, also a concern about the road being ramped against their property. So this kind of accomplished those two goals without putting us in violation of the Crabtree offset requirement, and shifting the road towards Crabtree would provide better line of sight.
So what is your line of sight now, either way? Do you have any idea?
I'd have to measure.
I see some questions here, Charles.
Yeah.
There's a lady in the back.
Yeah, I see, I'll get her. We'll give everybody a chance to speak.
So if we're along the center line of the roadway to at least the end of this page, we're at 180 feet.
Okay, until the curve line.
It's for St. Margulies.
Yeah, right in there.
On a Crabtree. You're looking at about 180 feet, the same.
Same, 180?
Yeah. And I think, I think heading to the east, I think the road graders would probably have a, would probably have a strong...
Yeah, going that way, I'm not, not that concerned. It's, it's to the corner, it might be a...
If you do a straight, if you do a straight, I wouldn't go that far, right about there. I mean, that's, when you, when the car is in the road...
Right.
Looking up, that's part of the right number of there, so you're looking at around 260 feet.
Okay.
Just to finish up, just to finish up, one, one quick thing. It was brought up that the, the entrance from Crabtree to this project, they could waiver, and the board felt it was wider and safer. That was the conclusion of the board, not me. Okay, I'm just bringing...
I mean, you're making, you're making statements of this board.
Right.
Okay, and I can't, I'm going to have to take and defer to my...
I know, because you weren't here. You're on vacation, right?
Right.
Yeah, so, okay, I'll finish up. That's my final word on this, the board can discuss that. Is it possible, do they allow the resident along the side of this project, do they allow them a 20-foot buffer? Is it allowed in the subdivision regulations?
Yeah, whatever, whatever we have for subdivision regulations, they would have to abide by.
You don't know offhand?
Well, that's more than 20 feet.
There's a setback requirement.
Setback is...
But there's not a buffer requirement because this...
No, no buffer on that, but there's a setback of 15 feet.
Next residential.
Okay, I got this one on page 45, the subdivision regulation, section nine, required improvements in subdivision design standard instructions specification subdivision, subsection S, open space, item six, the requirement regulation states an open space buffer area of 20 feet shall be adjacent to properties to the subdivision of shrubs and create a suitable visual and sound barrier. I mean, is that, I don't, I'm asking the board, is that true? Page 45.
I have the subdivision regulations right here.
Good.
On page 45, there's section called open space.
Section nine.
Yeah, it's a subheading.
Item six.
Yeah, I found it. It's just a, it's a subheading. It says a heading titled open space, and there's six sections. And it says the board may require that an area be reserved for possible car for parks up to three years provided under a state law. And then it's got four other sections, and the last section says an open space buffer area of 20 feet shall abut all adjacent properties to the subdivision. The area shall be planted with suitable shrubs to create a visual and sound barrier between the subdivision and surrounding properties.
Yeah, and it says may require.
At the top, how...
Let Carol look at it. How close are you to the property?
The east of Lee House.
Because that's open space behind you, right?
That's, yeah, that's the Woodsland Land Trust. There is very little to no vegetation along, at least this immediate eastern property line. These exceedings, this, the tree line kind of dives down over through here. It's that tree line. But there's a tree line through this area, but that's the existing tree line.
So there's two houses that are, how close do they get to them?
To the bottom of them, yeah.
You want the setback of those houses?
Well, this has the required 30-foot rear setback through here.
At 30 feet?
For the building itself.
Hmm?
But there's no, there's very little to no vegetation on that area to maintain natural vegetation coverage. It's all, it's all grass and weeds in that corner, remember? So what is your point, what are you trying to say?
My point, well, it says all open space buffer areas 20 feet shall abut all adjacent properties.
It says may require.
You say, you see it in there as may?
I think she said...
The top section for open space is may require.
An open space buffer area of 20 feet shall abut all adjacent properties to the subdivision.
Okay, yeah, sure, okay.
The area shall be planted with suitable shrubs to create a visual and sound barrier between the subdivision and surrounding properties.
Yeah, that's, I don't think that that's unusual, I'm just, for that to be required around the perimeter, I think that that's been done.
They've been doing that for years.
Right, so that, I don't think that there's a problem with this in this project.
So where's the issue here? Well, I'm not making an issue, I'm just saying, he, my grandson lives right there, and he's requiring a buffer, but I'd like to ask the engineer, maybe, would he be, like, if they're making that a main road, and he has to put up with that as the main road, would the builder mind putting up a six-foot vinyl fence?
A vinyl fence?
If that's what you're looking for?
Yeah.
How many feet is that, Chris?
Where is your grandson?
What do you want with vinyl fence?
They want him right there.
Yeah, yeah, it's a request.
So the common property is 100?
That's a request, that's just a request.
Okay.
What's the, what's the length, shared common property line is 180 feet? About 200 feet?
Yeah.
The developer has no issue with that. That can be a condition of approval. For a 10-foot, I mean, a six-foot vinyl fence. Now, just, just because we've done this before, that doesn't take away the 20-foot buffer areas.
Right.
And typically, what is done is it's not that the full 20 feet is buffer, it's if there's already existing trees there, that takes care of the issue.
Right.
Okay?
Yeah.
If it's not, then we typically are adding, planting things along, we have to provide that information.
But you're not showing...
There's only one spot really that would be needed.
There's one for a fence, as, as a tree.
It would be on, it would be on the abutters property, we'd have to get it eaten from him to put the fence up. It would be on, it would be on the abutts property, we don't think it'd need for him to put the fence up, it's his fence at the time.
I think it says.
I'm sure he'll care.
It's a stretch out, Colin?
Yeah, there's not much there.
Says shall be adjacent to properties of the subdivision, or you're saying the fence goes on his property?
And then the trees and would be the buffer.
Your grandson could put up a fence.
Right.
No, he's, it, I'm just going by the regulations. I just, I just wanted to.
So we're required to put, so I know, I know where Carol's going with it because of the fact that you don't want to require something that's not in regulations. So if we're required to provide a 20-foot open space buffer around the perimeter where, where, if there is, basically what was drawn on that old plane is just a dash line where around the perimeter is 20-foot open space. And that basically is, you can't build anything in it. And you've got to provide some sort of vegetative buffer between one property. That could be a row of evervites, okay? That could do, that could qualify.
It would be better than a fence, because a fence is gonna deteriorate if the leaves grow.
I did look into that, and it's two thoughts. The vinyl fence probably would enhance that house you put up better than evervites, which grow up potentially on stringery, where it has to be more maintenance. I think if you put up, if that, you know, the house.
Evervites will grow to 30 feet.
Right, some of them, yeah, yeah. That's what I mean. That's why I said, it would enhance the property there, the vinyl fence.
Well, my recollection of the grades over there are that this house, if I'm not mistaken, Chris, is a walkout basement.
Yes.
So the, the grade of, the grade of backyard of that house is six or seven feet below the roadway. Okay, and I believe the grandson's house goes up a little bit, but not a lot, so.
It's basically, he's going up the hill and your, that development starts going up the hill. That's why the visibility gets less. When I go out of my grandson's house, I really be, gotta be cautious, because there's not much time to get out there. That's why they were missing it, lying in Crabtree. But anyway, if, I guess it's suitable to you if we put up a, no.
Maybe a 6-foot.
6-foot, if it's agreeable with the.
Well, I mean, we would, it would be one or the other. I think, okay, if we're gonna be forced to put a fence up, if that's what people are wanting. Well, we have to do, we have to do the vegetation.
Right.
So if we do the fence, then we're doing the fence and lure the vegetation, we're not gonna go.
No, no, that's fine.
So we're gonna do the vegetation.
We want to do the vegetation.
That's what, that's what is typical.
That's what the cause for, yeah.
Calls for vegetation now.
Right, right, I'm old, I requested it, that's all. But if you drive, do the vegetation with, with the private, fine.
20-foot buffer, okay. If there was a 20-foot buffer.
And the next thing, it says suitable shrubs to create a visual and sound barrier. So it'd be up to you to make something. That's pretty close to that. I have to bank on you, and you do the best you could. Actually, you actually approved the other house, though.
Well, it's not me, I'm just engineer.
You're the engineer.
It includes all the house.
But I, I think that we've already said that we're, there's no, there's no specificity within the regulations of what that open space buffer is supposed to be linked with, except it's supposed to be able to create a visual and sound barrier.
Right.
Buffer.
True. I have no demands, no complaints.
You're, you're better off with, with something like an evervite or, or you want, you know, you don't want a deciduous tree. You want, you want evergreens or some kind.
I was gonna, I was gonna suggest that, but they grow huge.
Oh, everything grows.
Well, you're asking for a visual and sound barrier.
I am, I'm not against it, I'm just saying, I thought of vinyl fences, I don't weigh it over, that's fine. I, I think.
Okay, let's move on. Go ahead. Are you upset?
I am, oh, one other thing. No, no, I have a right to say something.
No, go right ahead.
Because this is important. When you're thinking about having the main road, you ought to also think that the bus is going in to pick up a lot of kids.
Yeah.
Okay, so you, the board was pretty convinced that was the safer way to go. So that's all I have to say, thank you.
Okay. Yes, ma'am, in the back.
Hi. Michaela Oger, Borough Whittles, she lives at 644, 664.
What was her name again?
Michaela Borough Whittles, 664 Willard, I'm, I'm her sister. May I speak? Sure. So Michaela's house is the one where the tree is, where the property would come right out. The old girl would come right out at her house. We had the sidewalk where I think three of you may not have been there to kind of witness what these three were saying. Is that when you're standing there, it's a very, very different situation from at Crabtree to where they've even moved the road. They did move it up, and we appreciate that, so it's not shining directly into her home. But at the April, May meeting, I think it was, and I'm not sure that the two of you were there, the last meeting, this project was not approved specifically for them to redesign the road. And I think that that's if we, you have the April minutes available, I don't see them online. But I think that that meeting for this project was postponed specifically for them to redesign the road, and that the board at the sidewalk told them that they would waive or potentially debate waiving the 125, because even if it was closer to Crabtree, it was a better option than what they've proposed by moving it slightly down. And I think that they witnessed that, they thought it was a great idea. Mr. Salvatore thought that it was a great idea as well, he's not here to speak. But that's why we all went home and this project wasn't approved, because the members said, we don't like this plan. It's safer, it's wider, it's brighter, and that's why the project wasn't approved at that time. And now two months went by where the meeting has been canceled for this. And then finally we come back, and the project is exactly the same as it was three months ago. So I don't know if you could look back in the minutes, but I believe that four of them, four of you, and I know two of you have been absent for a number of meetings, so we haven't met you yet, but.
Who's that? I missed one.
Yeah, you, you were here.
I missed, I, yeah, I missed one, and this project was considered.
I'm not sure that I've seen it before.
That's not true, because we didn't actually come to meet anywhere.
That's right, so I have a mistake.
But at the sidewalk, I think it just makes a very good statement as to why they said, even though there's a 125-foot rule, it's a, it's a town rule, and they would opt to waive that to make a safer project.
So my question to you is, the Borough Whittles were originally concerned that the headlights and the traffic would be directly facing their house.
Sure.
And now they have moved the road so that.
It's in between two.
So I guess what is your, what, what's the, and I'm only, I'm not asking in a pejorative way, I'm just asking. So what is your concern now that the road?
Well, the concern was.
Is not, is not at all directly facing the Borough Whittles' house.
When we went to the sidewalk in March, I don't know if the board can speak to it, but it was pretty evident that the location that they moved it to, although better for, for this property, certainly wasn't gonna make the best project. So I don't, I don't know if the three that are here are willing to speak to that, but when we came back, we had hoped that that plan would.
And that's what Patrick said already.
Would have been revised.
Being there, it really does look different than what it's all there is.
Yeah, well, he, he said that, I mean, he, we're not, just because, well, I, I mean, the applicant has asked for another day to begin with, and we haven't voted on anything yet either. So, I mean, we, the chair is giving people the opportunity to speak again because it is a scheduled meeting, so.
I mean, in fairness to the applicant as well, there are other considerations. I mean, the fact that there are serious geological issues with the grading and everything else, those have to be taken into consideration by the board. So I mean, I completely agree with what you're saying, but I'm, there is also.
I think these days you could build a road anywhere, it's, it's not.
Other considerations.
Chair, those elements that are being discussed relative to moving the road closer to Crabtree, we did take a look at that. Okay, it wasn't that we ignored, we took a look at it, the grading and the, of the alignment of the roadway, the reverse curves that start getting developed within the roadway alignment, which would preclude us being able to do that and be able to get under the national grid power lines, get anything less than perpendicular with what they require, so they were sent. Okay, so for us to cross national grid easements, we have to cross perpendiculars, that's what we've done. Number two, I don't think there's any disagreement from anybody in this room that if the drive, if the roadway was across from Crabtree lane, it would be a better, better roadway alignment. We've never disputed that. The issue was, we don't own that land, okay? So we can't, the road can't be built just anywhere. You have to actually only control the land to be able to do so. In this situation, what we have is basically the outline of the green. So that's the configuration that we're working with. That's the configuration we, we started working with after, I think, the first or second preliminary plan meeting, when the agreement was made to purchase the house of budding where the roadway is entering in right now. Okay, so that's where we've been from day one of this definitive plan, is on that section. So we did, we didn't ignore the sidewalk. We did take into a, into a review of that and found out that it wasn't, there wasn't any benefit to doing it, that would be anything but cause additional concerns relative to being able to have a project go through fruition with respect to national grid. The grades didn't work, the reverse curve started getting a little bit questionable. So there are other elements to the design aside from just, hey, put the road right here, that we have to consider. So all in all, the reason we're coming back with this plan, the reason we haven't changed the plan, is because we feel that of all things considered, this is the best location for the roadway.
One of the other options was, was the consideration of removing that lot, and then you'd have plenty of room to work that road in.
No, we wouldn't be having 25-foot offset requirement.
Well, the board had discussed that they would waive that too because it was a town.
Okay, I want to have people back.
That's, we can't, we can't.
Address the board's legislation.
So. I wasn't at the sidewalk either, so I don't know what was said.
Okay.
So I can't speak to it.
Okay, so we'll leave it on you guys.
I honestly don't remember that 125 mention. I remember discussing the idea that it would be better to wind up with the road, and that, yeah, discussing waivers would be worth, it was worth doing. We definitely did have that conversation.
But they don't own the property.
Well, we, we did have that conversation then, because all we talked about at the site was where the road was at the time is definitely unacceptable. And so then we were talking about what are the alternatives we can do, and we talked about a bunch of them. You know, coming out the other end, reversing the egress road for what we have, moving, you know, and we talked about a bunch of them. And one of them would have required, and we did say, certainly open to it, no specific.
Okay.
Their, their regulation is accurate, I don't have the April minutes, so I can tell you what's in there, but their regulation is accurate, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Dave Homier, board's recent counselor. I quickly reviewed some of these, some of the language here of the declaration of the covenants, conditions, restrictions, and easements, and certainly a lot to digest in about an hour and a half. And I'm not an attorney, and I am very happy to hear that Coleman and Page is reviewing this, that was gonna be one of my suggestions.
They're reviewing just the covenant, not the plan?
Right, the covenant.
Okay, you're right.
Yeah, that's why, that's what I figured, yeah. And, you know, primarily page 15 talks about assessments, and page 30 talks about the consequences for not paying them and stuff like that. So I think that's what's important, and I'm very happy that they're, are reviewing them. I mean, just to see what they have to say about them. But one of my other questions still, you know, that's still lingering is street lighting. I just kind of want a definitive answer, are we, is the engineer asking for a waiver?
No, not, no. Okay, at the, if I may through the chair, Bill, again, at the development review board meeting most recently held, it was, we spoke at Bravissine, and they agreed that for the past 25 or 30 years, they've said no to streetlights. But now the, the cost of the streetlights and the cost of running the streetlights is significantly less. It used to be because of the, because of the technology. So we've agreed to put the streetlights into the project. And we're gonna work out the details of where they go with.
Most recent projects have had streetlights.
Right, and I didn't see any on the original plan, so I wasn't too sure, but I appreciate that, and I'm very happy to hear that. And just a couple of the other outstanding items that remain are primarily in section 11, maintenance. We talked about, or I mentioned before, about a maintenance endowment shall be established by the developer in the amount of 5% of the construction improvements cost as approved by the board prior to, prior to the release of any lot in a subdivision. The principal amount of the endowment shall not be drawn upon by the association for at least 15 years from the date of the establishment, at which time it might be drawn upon for maintenance reconstruction or reconstruction of roads. But I, I guess in this situation, it would be for the detention pond and anything like that, is that correct? And any of the infrastructure under the grounds.
Yeah, it'd be for anything that, that the association is.
Responsible for.
Responsible for.
Right. And it does mention here, if I can point out, section 11, item B3, the Department of Public Works or the planning board's consultant engineer shall be required to approve all cost estimates prior to planning board approval. So I would, I would really like to see that, you know.
Yeah, we do that.
If that's, that's.
That stands it.
Right.
We get, we get our requests from, we'll go to, I'm not, we're not engineers. So we go to the DPW, they're engineering department. They will tell us what the, what the cost is, what the bonds are, what has to be covered, and then we'll take that. Sometimes we increase it a little bit, we never decrease it.
If I may, but chair, I have my back to you. So those values are really assessed at the time of bonding of the roadway. Typically what is happening, and this is a different type of covenant, but it's in the covenant agreement relative to the construction of the roadways, which they typically will put the lots up for those. Once the binder is down for a section of the roadway for them to pull building permits on the, on those lots, they have to basically put absurdy to basically cover the cost of finishing the roadway section that they're trying to build on. So that's when the cost estimate comes together, DPW puts that together, and we go back and forth on that, come over the value that we want to raise upon. The planning board then approves that as part of the bonding issuance for the project. That's what I, and I'm not sure if that's in the covenant agreement, but it's a different, it's a different aspect of it. Am I speaking with that back to the chair?
Correct.
Yeah.
I think, I think I did find some language in the covenant agreement that basically coincides.
There were two things in covenant, there's bonding in this covenant, okay? The first part is the covenant is where the city actually holds the deeds on the property. Okay, and then the, the binder course has to, well, all your sewage, all your water, your binder course, okay? Your subwork has to be done. At that time, the, the DPW will say, okay, we've, we've inspected this, and this is done, we can go forward. At that point, we would release lot four, lot seven, lot 12, whatever it might be, okay? They go ahead and they'd start building. When they get down to like two lots or three lots, okay? At that point, the cost of the lots or the value is, is such that we want to take, and then we want a cash. That's when we go to bonding. Then we'll say, okay, to finish, to, to do the, all the finished work, to put in load, you know, whatever has to be done at that point to include, okay, as-built drawings, okay? Then we take those, those, we say that's worth 40,000, 50,000, 100,000, I don't know what that number is, okay? Then we, we take that, and then at the end, when the project is complete, and the DPW says, okay, we released that, all this work is done, then we can release the bond. But one more step is we go to the city council.
Right.
And the petitioner, okay, has to petition the city council, okay, that they're having for acceptance of the road at that point, okay? But, and we hold bond. Now, once they petition the city council, then we release the bond.
Right, and I understand where you're coming from, I think you're talking about the general bond of the project. This, this talks about a separate endowment.
That, that's a covenant for the other work that they're doing.
Which stays, that doesn't get returned.
That doesn't go away.
Since they have up to 15 years, as it says, right?
So there's, there's two covenants.
It's basically the seed money for the homeowners.
There's, there's two covenants, there's one covenant, and Nate, I would say, he's just a work, but they're not. There's one covenant for the homeowners association, and there's one covenant for the, for the actual subdivision relative to the construction of roads, okay? relative to the construction of roads, okay? And that's, they have two different things there, but they have the same name.
Right.
And I think, and I'm not sure if you have the most up-to-date version, because of the fact that the attorneys have been going back and forth all week on these. So there's, there's been a lot of edits that have been made to that. All of them agreeable to our attorney, or just agree to everything that the other attorney...
We were hoping to have the new package before the next meeting, but it didn't happen.
So it's probably rescheduled though. But, no, I think, I, I do have to say that I do appreciate all the information that's come forth. I think we're moving in the right direction, getting a little bit more solid answers, you know, and I'm, you know, happy to see this homeowners agreement, which I think we'll maybe have teeth to it by the time we're done. So, you know, we have a viable homeowners association that can maintain what they're supposed to maintain.
Well, that's...
Yeah, I don't want to make any accusations, you know, that these people aren't going to do what they were supposed to do, but there's a history, a long history, and it's not a good one, of people holding back.
So you referred to these people, you're referring to past projects in general.
Past projects.
In general, right.
And I, I could tell you a few.
I know a few.
It's not good. It's not good.
History is...
I've lived in one.
Yes, you do.
And then there's another, I think this might be just a general bond. Page 40, it talks about, I don't want to read the whole thing, it's kind of lengthy, but about 20% of the value of, 20% of the value of set improvements. I think that's just a general bond, so, but you don't set that until the project starts to evolve, right?
Yeah, I'm not sure, that might have been some of the language that was reading.
I think that's, I think that's been changed.
Yeah. Yeah, 20% of the value, so, okay. I think that's it for now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do I have anyone else who wishes to speak? You've been very patient sitting there.
I've been listening, I've been learning. Ed Hinlin, with the Lake Sammaset Property Owners Association, that's in butter to the subdivision, and we've raised many concerns already. Most of those have been addressed, the engineer's been great on that. The remaining things are really three pretty simple questions. And one, I wanted to clarify, is the DPW going to be taking care of the catch bases?
Yes.
They will be taking care of it, and the planning board has a letter within this project saying that the DPW will take care of it.
The catch bases would be in the road.
That was a question, because that's, that's an important thing.
I believe we confirmed that at the development review board meeting, because we talked about the different, it's very specific what we're not maintaining, okay? Or I should say what we are maintaining, we're maintaining the water quality units, the underground chamber systems, and the detention base themselves. All the other piping within the street and the catch bases in the main, those are all being maintained by the DPW, the water may be maintained by the DPW, and the roads upon acceptance, well, I should say, all these things upon acceptance.
Right. And that was the main thing, that the city DPW does a great job on catch base and cleaning, they do it, and that's probably the most important thing, and that was the reason we wanted to get that clarified. The second thing is, on the homeowner agreement, it's still in the process of evolution.
Right.
Will we be able to see that and make comments to the planning board on our perspective on the...
Right, we will not...
We don't have that yet.
We don't have it either.
That's what I'm saying. But my question is, will we have a chance?
Just contact me and I'll get it too.
Yes, you will. And before you leave here tonight, okay, I'll stop by the office, make sure Mrs. Wood has the...
She does.
Has your information.
She does.
She will get a copy, you or anybody else that wants a copy. Okay, homeowners association will get a copy too.
And that'd be great. And will we have a chance to comment to the planning board on what we think about...
Yes, because we continue, the hearing will be continued.
Oh, okay, well, that's good.
Okay, because we don't have that information.
Mr. Dan, I got asked an hour ago.
Okay, that was, that's how we opened the meeting.
Okay. I admit that, so.
How is that open to be able to have you guys make a condition to approve?
Yeah. Well, it's conditioned, but I mean, there are a number of questions.
It's always a good question to ask.
What's that?
It's a good question to ask.
Yeah.
But the hearing will be continued, then.
We intend to continue.
Okay. I won't ask my third question then, because that, my main question on that is, has the DPW approved part of the submission of the homeowner agreement required by EPA, the city, and the EBI, is that you need to have the annual cost, the operating budget, for the maintenance of the stormwater system, has to be part of that agreement, and the planning board has to approve that, and then the DPW or the planning board's consultant need to review that budget and approve it, and that was, that's the question we have.
But the, anything that, that document will go to the DPW. They get another whack at looking at the, see what I, what changes.
That answers the question.
We made no technical decisions, okay? So we'll be asking for the DPW to finalize the technical decisions to us and say, yeah, yeah, we've looked at this and this is okay.
I believe that's been done, because we actually had an order of petitions from conservation already, which includes those budgets. So I think that those budgets are part of our original, they in the original drainage?
They were not part of our original maintenance plan?
No, they were not part of the original budget.
Can I answer the question? The conservation commission said at the meeting, the planning board was going to take care of that.
Oh, okay.
I've got it in my notes.
Well, that was my other question to you, is that all the issues...
We've got to make sure that all the conservation commissions...
We brought it up to the con con, and they said, that's not our purview, that's the planning board's.
Yeah, we will make sure that the, the conserva, that the DPW is in line with everything that's being said in the, in the document, because this is...
That's correct.
Yeah, we've been very, too many times over the years.
We're going to be scheduling this.
Okay. Do I have anyone else that has any questions?
More quickly, the request I made about the 20-foot buffer, would that be written as, as a condition?
It doesn't need to be a condition, it's a requirement.
It's not a requirement, it's not a condition.
It is required.
Okay, cool, we'll be done. Okay, thank you.
So when do we want to take action, or continue till?
Does the applicant have a specific date?
You've got September 16.
So that's me.
You've got October 7. You've got October 21.
I'm looking at September 16th at 6:45.
I'm not going to be here.
You want to go to October?
I think, I think we're down to the last few items, the covenant.
We have.
The covenant agreement, that document should be finalized within the next day or two, at least released from the attorneys to come back to the planning board. And at that point, I think it's, it's a solid enough document that it becomes part of the public records initial, it's a middle. The O and M review by DPW, we have all the data on that. So I don't see, I don't see, I, I don't think there's anything else aside from those two items, correct?
Not today, no.
Do you have anything, anything else that came up?
If you go through my memos, I put them in the board's packets, there are a couple of items under plan notes, information that's requested. If you look on page four of my April 30 note, and I gave you another copy of it, I remember everything that the regulations required.
Is there something else that...
On the floor?
Yes, I have.
I'm sure you do. So it looks like these are minor in nature, I think, the wetlands buffer items relative to the lots, obviously we have to file conservation permits for those lots.
Do you want to read, do you want me to read these? Just to read into the record. On sheet 1712, there is symbols overlay on the access utility easement, add the symbol. amend the note on sheet one of the plan to state, the portions of the subject property are subject to the city of limits to floodplain district regulations rather than maybe. Wetlands buffer sheet 7, lots 3, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 12, 13, and 14, display help within the 100-foot buffer. Open space per section 14F, board may require an open, an area to be reserved for public product provided on the sheet 1, section C41, section 81U, per DIS, the applicant is not proposing any common areas of open space. Sidewalks and bike paths per section 9H, sidewalks having the width of not less than five feet shall be constructed between the roadway and the right-of-way line. Standards for sidewalks are detailed, section 14F. Street trees per section 9.1, point, no, 9.12, point 2, the applicant is required to plant trees along roads between the roadway and the sidewalk. Bank plantings, are there any banks within the subject area but slopes greater than 3.1 per section 9M? Bank plantings are required in area with slope greater than 3.1. Detail the origin of street names. Du Fens and Patricia, developers are encouraged to name new streets at the limits to veterans. Are those veterans?
Yes.
I think they were, yeah, that's what we know.
Okay, I know that's a, just a question. A butters indicate the name and address of all butters across from Lake Shore Drive. Detail length of proposed Du Fens street per section 9R3C, dead end seat shall not be longer than 500 feet less than a pin of the border, grade length is necessated by departmental or other local conditions.
Okay, I believe that the length is less than 500 feet from the intersection of the two.
So, so you want to comment?
So, so what we'll do is, we'll, we'll add, I don't see, there's any problem adding any of this stuff, I believe the street trees are already there, but we can go through this and just confirm. I believe that we also have five-foot sidewalks throughout the development, but we can take a look at those elements all before the next meeting very easily.
Okay.
Should not be, there are also three waivers requested, we'll have to review the things that's...
Okay.
So, September...
So, September 16th is coming up.
That's six.
September 15th, 16th?
Six thirty-five.
We have one item at 6:30 already.
Six seventy-five.
Six thirty?
Six thirty-five, yeah.
What is it, 6:30?
I don't know why, I mean, 6:45, because if Mary Avenue goes forward, we're not going to do it in five minutes.
So.
They go to our regular meeting like we did tonight.
Mary Avenue is on October...
When I first got on this board, we always did have been 15-minute increments unless they were related.
Mary Avenue is October 21st.
We have 909 Elm Street on September 16.
909 Elm?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's going to take more than five minutes.
Yes.
Okay, 6:45, please.
So 6:45.
Second.
And then we'll just continue, and we'll just move on.
All right, so the bank plantings waiver there, I'm going to take a quick talk about those. That's really, the bank planting waiver we're asking for is only for the cul-de-sac plantings. And that's really up to the board. We're indifferent, the DPW likes no island, the planning board typically does, so that's your choice.
I see.
The width of the street, I believe that that's supposed to be the width of the street paved ways, not right-of-ways.
Yeah, paved with.
Yeah, so that, that should be the pavement, and it's typically, well, it's typically got a 28 feet, the regulation's at 34. In this development, we've agreed to go from the entrance to pass the intersection at 36 and taper it down. So that would be what we're looking for for the waiver, we'd be for the balance of maybe 28 feet, and the minimum curvy of street, the street curves. That's more specific to the offsets labeled under that, or the, sorry, the two rows of things actually on a category. There's only one cul-de-sac.
Okay. So the motion is for September?
16.
16th at 6:45. Do I have a motion to that effect? Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Here none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say no, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Two, taking old business, has been continued Mary Avenue, continued Middle Land and Village. A new business done. Status update for some of the states, Ligon Hill Road.
There's a memo in your packet outlining my findings. I did some digging on some estates, and I found some information, and other information was not forthcoming. But overall, there's a lot of, a lot of steps in the process that are, haven't been met, and they're bullet pointed in my obvious 13th memo. Essentially, the board needs to determine whether or not subdivision is active or expired.
Some of the... Some of the states, yeah?
Hi.
Yeah.
I copied you on the memo.
Okay. Okay, we have a...
The developer made a request by email.
I got it.
To continue to back in the property, and I did some research.
We have a request for the continuation to the status of some of the states, and the original approval was on 2000. May 2nd of 2000. Elizabeth, I want you to, you want you to go through this, but...
You want to go through the memo?
Yeah, yeah, go through the memo.
Okay, I'll let you know what I found out. So I wasn't here in 2000, I wasn't here in 2007. I have files in my office, and I have other departments that I respond with to get information. So you came forward to us detailing your intent to complete construction of some estate subdivision. And I, the board needs to decide whether or not that's an active subdivision or if it's expired. I'll let you, and I let you know in my memo what I discovered when I, in our records, and I'm not saying they're complete, you might have information that we don't have.
I think we have more records than we'd want to give to you.
And, and if you do, that's great. So the original approval we have is from May 2nd, 2000, and when I was looking through the file, it said there was an amendment made in 2007, but I didn't see any record of it, is there...
Yeah, the amendment was, when you review Crown Point, you changed some of the... Yeah, the amendment was, when you review Crown Point, you changed some of the states. Some of the states used to be a horseshoe-shaped road with a cul-de-sac. The planning board in two thousand seven wanted a connector road from Crown Point to alleviate the traffic to get back to Central Street. So, you modified some of the states by creating the connector. And when you did that, you modified the plan for some of the states. And then you recorded that plan in two thousand eight. The covenant was recorded in two thousand four or five. Two thousand five.
Okay.
But the modification comes after the covenant, because you phased it into the Crown Point phase-in plan. I know a couple of people that put it in, here was there, that off you was gone, that was the sequence of that.
Jumping ahead, you mentioned a covenant, you might have record of that?
It's recorded, it works for these.
Okay. I don't have a file, I have files of covenants that the city has, we didn't have that one filed in our office.
I can give you the working page, or I can give you a copy, whatever's easier for you.
Okay, so that would be helpful information. The treasurer's office also didn't have a record of that. So, then, a performance guarantee wasn't gathered because you had the covenant, is that?
You waived the performance guarantee in the covenant, if you read the covenant, it's very specific.
Okay, so there's no performance guarantee, and you'd agree to that. I didn't find one, I did a search. I did not find any document releasing the covenant.
The covenant won't be released until it's completed, so you don't release them until the house is finished.
So, we didn't have a record of that, so that makes sense. As part of the original approval, a construction plan should have been submitted as part of the condition of approval. And I can't find this construction plan.
The original plans were twelve pages, the construction details are all in the original plans, and they were all contained.
Okay, we don't have that.
I can give you a copy of what we have, but you have the signed originals, the twelve pages.
That's a problem.
Well, that's the thing, our records are.
I'm happy to give you more, I have a problem there.
Yeah, we don't have.
I think that there was an office.
We don't know.
I'm happy to supply all those documents, I have some.
Somebody, you know, we're not sure if somebody did a clean-out.
Okay.
Something happened, we've done a search for it, and we haven't found anything.
Would it please the board to set up a meeting, maybe with Elizabeth and Jamie, and we can bring you all these documents for her to review? So, you have a good comprehensive understanding of where we're at.
Yeah, you could do that, because I'll admit, we're behind the eight ball on this one, because something happened in the past. Did somebody decide to have a clean-out Saturday, okay, and not knowing what they were doing? We've had interns in there doing things. I, we just don't know. And it's been so long, we're talking eighteen years.
That's year to year, isn't it?
Nineteen years, like eight, you know? And it's, and a typical subdivision is seven years. And even if you go to two thousand seven, we have seven years up to that. You know, that's fourteen, so we're past, we're outside of that seventeen, that's.
So, what happened there was, and just, yeah, just so the board understands, what happened there is when we started the project. It's currently about seventy-five percent complete. The water lines are laid dry, they're not connected to the pump station. The sewerage is completely installed and operating, the existing homes are used, the sewer line that we put in. The drainage is completed, and the retention pump is completed and operational. Of course, the drainage won't work proper until the road is paved, because the road is designed to collect the water instead of the retention pump. All the infrastructure is in, all the infrastructure is paid for, all the infrastructure is inspected by the DPW. The twenty-three water sewer clearance plans have been paid for, have been received by the DPW, and are still in good standing. They've already paid for all twenty-three lots, water sewer clearance plans. As a matter of fact, I had a conversation with the DPW, where they revisited that and said, "We can't charge you any more money than what you originally paid, even though you paid for them so long ago. There was substantially less than what the cost would be today." So, it's, we're fairly certain that we're okay to continue, but we wanted to let you know what's going on, and give you an opportunity to ask us whatever you'd like.
And the pump station.
And you may recall, John, because you were involved in this, but we.
Yeah, I was.
We upgraded the pump station for Castle Land to utilize that water, so we donated three hundred thousand dollars, contributed three hundred thousand dollars towards that pump station upgrade. It's actually, it's actually. Yes, we paid for that, so we've already, we've met all the criteria.
You've done a lot, that's what I'm saying, is we're trying to. Not going to want to, we've got to get back to A square.
Agreed.
I don't want to say square one, because I don't want to go back to square one, okay? And I want to say A square, that we're going to find, and, and let's say, you know, the board, we know you've done some work there, you know, a fair amount, I don't want to make a judgment on the amount that they're owed. So, I know there was an investment there. I don't know how much of investment, but at the same time, so I, again, I rely on the DPW. So, I do want to then set up a meeting with you, with Jamie, okay? And then, and the DPW, and any records that you have, okay? So, we can be brought this back up to date, okay? So, the board will look, now, the problem we have is, one of the things, is because of the lapse in time, we now have some new regulations of water quality that we didn't have before, okay? I don't know how much that would affect that, but I'd like to take, okay, a look at that anyway, to see if there, you know, if the drainage counts have changed or anything else. I don't know that, but that's, that's the one major thing that has happened in the last eighteen, you know. Most of the subdivision regulations are pretty much the same, you know, all that stuff hasn't, you know, there's a couple of Ts crossed and a couple of Is dotted, but, you know, and a few zoning changes, but in general, for the subdivision, it has, they haven't changed. So, we want to take a look at today's subdivision regulations and the water quality thing, to see if we can bring up today. No, see, there was a new one put in, that's almost like five years old. So, that was developed by the city, and we were required by the state to do it. So, it's not something that we're required, the state came up with this whole new environmental thing on water quality.
Should we be doing that with the DPW, John, or would you rather we do it with your agent? Who should we?
I would like to work with both.
Okay.
Okay? And if we can get us back to a point where we're working, and we can, and we can do that, then I don't have a problem going forward, okay?
Appreciate you, thank you.
But I want to get, get to a state that we, that we're whole in, and at this point, we're not whole.
Well, that was the purpose of reaching out, to get to that state, that's why we sent the email. And that was the whole point of why we sent.
It doesn't imply me anything to say, no, we're not going to do it, okay? I mean, we want to do, we could.
I don't know if we could, I don't know if we could, I don't know if subdivisions expire. Special permits do, but I don't know if subdivisions do.
There's, if you note in my memo, there's, it doesn't talk about expiration, but it talks about the power of the board, and.
Well, we can, we could rescind, yeah, we could rescind its approval, but that's still difficult, and which is, still comes with a heavy burden on our part.
Right. I agree, I'm not, I'm not, I agree with it, I don't, I'm not having a problem there, I just want to. We've tried to gather the information, we're having problems with that. So, if you could work, okay, with the department and the DPW, then we could have a joint meeting. Make sure that we're back to square one, or square.
I think it's a great suggestion, we're happy to do it.
Okay, and then we come back and, and then.
We don't have to schedule this today.
I can if you like.
Might be good to check with the DPW and see what their schedule allows, because they're going to have to come on a date that they.
If you want to reach out to us, if you want to contact DPW, then reach out to us with two or three dates, and then we can.
Yeah, I'll coordinate it.
Okay, perfect.
Okay. Do everybody agree?
Yeah.
No, we don't need a vote.
Thank you for your time.
It's a consensus, I just want to put a consensus to the board at this point, you know, where we can.
And I'll give you documents quickly, as a matter of fact, I can give you the covenant today if you like, if that would help you to have a copy of the covenant test report.
Sure.
If it gives you the working page, it's recorded, it's registered, it's not signed by Mr. Susan.
Yeah, yeah, I was looking for that, and I didn't have a file on it in my office, so.
Okay. Just a stop. Okay, thank you for your time, have a nice night.
Thank you. Take care. Born release for South End Woods.
Okay, you'll note there's a letter or email printout in your packet. On July eleventh, we were contacted by Karen Geronimo Properties, asking for, they want, they have a invoice for a subdivision bond for South End Woods that they no longer need, and they want to cancel their bond. But they need a letter from us saying that everything's been completed, so that they can cancel it, and we're not able to write such a letter. I checked with DPW, everything, is it completed?
No, we got to get a letter first from the DPW, that they inspected.
So, basically, I, we can't.
Why don't you just go back to them and say, the procedure is that we get a, that the DPW, you get to do a full inspection. Okay? For the bond.
Well, they did, they did, they said, so John told Elizabeth, we still need final as-built street plan, street acceptance plan.
Right.
Legal word to get through the city council, did Karen respond to you after July twenty-sixth?
No.
So, I say we table it until she does, and maybe you want to reach out to her again.
Yeah, reach out to her.
She wasn't talking about this.
No, but Elizabeth wrote her, wrote to her directly and wrote exactly what John had written.
Yep, okay.
Okay.
So, no action?
Heavy traffic.
There's another memo in your packet, an email.
There's no action. Okay, heavy traffic exclusion.
Yes, there's an email in your packet dated August fifth from Brian, I don't doubt.
Doherty.
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 And I recommend the board review that and provide any comment back to Mr. Doherty.
Well, I, why would I ever? As a member of the planning board, why would I ever actively support that?
Give us your extra heavy traffic.
And on top of it, he says, although the numbers are getting, we are getting in heavy traffic on Lummester, are under two percent, do not meet the threshold the road requires, we may still submit the proposal. I, I say we take no action on our own.
Well, I had suggested, you know, just to be on the safe side, we submit, that we send back to the planning board. I just can't see it, okay, number one. And for them not to use Lummester Road, anybody doesn't know, is a continuation of Day Street. So, Day Street runs out there, and that means that that traffic, that's now going that way, if there was any traffic, would go all the way up to two A.
I already moved, so it's moot for me, it's just.
Yeah. And then back into Loombrake, and it doesn't.
And then he says, maybe we'd like to submit Day Street for heavy vehicle exclusion, but where is it going to? If they're going to block off Lummester Road, where's they going to go?
Day Street goes back up to thirteen.
You have to have an alternate route, and it just doesn't make, we have to answer them, okay?
Well, I suppose we should answer them out of courtesy, but.
Out of courtesy.
He's not going to like the answer.
My guess is that.
And isn't this more of a city council issue than a?
Well, that was the other thing, that I was thinking of, is to refer this to the city council. They should, they should have been, they should have gone to the city council, but. You know. I think, I think we should refer it back to the city council.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
And.
It's called Powell, go the other way. It's all Powell's trucks.
Yeah, Powell's going, they go up, they go up Bassapug.
Don't they, is Powell located in Loombrake? Don't they bring, don't they bring revenue to the town?
Yeah, they don't go that way, they go up Bassapug.
Oh, they'll go up sometimes.
Why do you want to bust on a company that's business that's bringing new revenue?
It does all feel, it does.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, so that's, that's, we don't have to vote on that, that's my, I think John is correct, should go to the.
Our motion, well, motion would be to refer it to the city.
I saw more.
Second.
Motion made, second, refer it to the city council. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Polls say no? Okay, they'll probably send it back to us for a recommendation. Well, they will. Sixty, Almond Road Traffic Report.
Just, there's an email in your packet from August thirteenth from James, another name I can't pronounce. Someone.
Row. Row. Row.
James Rowe.
James Rowe.
James Rowe.
That's the guy.
Just here. Jamie Rowe.
Jamie Rowe was here, and he wrote this email stating that they are authorized to be forward with a traffic study. And they're going to have more information after August thirtieth.
Okay.
Nothing, just to.
Just continue. Okay, Directors Report.
John has already seen this, we sat down together with Stephanie to kind of go over with what we're going to be doing in-house, when we're not working on development review and agenda items. And the mayor's also seen this and provided comment, and this is what we've come up with. Stephanie, I'm totally flexible, if the board has other ideas and things they want us to do, we are fully open to it, but this is just, in the time I've been here, and in nine months I've been here, I've seen gaps and needs, and that's what I made a list of what we need to do. The biggest thing is, big, big project is to organize our files and do an inventory of a lot of our, of what we have. And Ed started us out doing some basics for that, but we have a lot further to go. And we're going to tackle maybe a few drawers at a time, so that we don't shut down our office. And we want to get to where we have, we know exactly what street is in what subdivision, what year it was approved, what's missing. We don't even know what's missing, and we find out as people come in, like today, it's rather embarrassing, someone comes in and wants something, and we don't have it. And so that, we can recover the registries some of what we can't.
Can you elaborate a little more on numbers three and six?
Okay, we have a vacancy in our department for our housing rehab specialist, it's a part-time position, it's under the CDBG program. And there are rules, they, a person follows based on the CDBG criteria. And we've had trouble recruiting a person because it's, I think it used to be a full-time position a long time ago, but the type of person that you need for that is very specialized.
And it's part-time, grand time.
It's just not an attractive position. We, I advertised on building official websites, because I was thinking maybe a retired building inspector would be the ideal candidate for this. We got one application, I called him for an interview, he didn't respond, so we need to figure out, if someone has a creative approach as to how we can fill that, I'm all ears.
What is the qualification?
You have to have like a building contractor's background, so that you know building code, that's the biggest one.
Okay, I'll do that, please, Kate.
And number six?
Yeah.
Our GIS layers, we have zoning overlay districts, and when you click on the layers for zoning overlay districts, it shows them as one. There are multiple districts within the overlays, but our layer shows them as one conglomerated layer. It's hard to distinguish, you know, what's in downtown overlay, what's in village overlay, what's, what's what? And what's exclusively in which the, each the, and we have a paper map that shows it, but we need, we're, we need to get up to electronic age and have it randomly available for anybody that wants to see, there's a.
Sounds like a good college project. For advanced.
Yes, GIS, yeah. So, we either have to pay, tie, and bind to do it, or we can get an intern, I'd like to get a fall intern. So, did you have more questions? I mean, and this isn't, this isn't all inclusive or set in stone, if you, if we're moving along and the board thinks something that we need to do, you can call us up and. you can call us up and tell us what you need.
Okay. Any questions on this? Well, didn't we have another one for a?
Yes, we do have something that's not at, uh, so I get requests after the agenda's already published.
Oh, yeah, I'd make a motion to add to the agenda communications.
Yes.
A letter from.
So, we were contacted by an attorney's office, um, I think they're a title attorney. And they're trying to close on a house. And they can't do it because part of their requirements are that they have evidence that a covenant was released, that the lot was released. And, um, again, with the way our records are, I, I don't have it, I didn't find it in the registry. We looked in the registry, we didn't, we didn't see it. So, um, there's a lot, 33 Farm Hill Road, Lot 9, it already has a house on it, the house was built in 1986. So, logic tells you that it must have been released, because if it wasn't released, half of the area built the house. But, it doesn't matter, in their closing paperwork, they need something stating that the lot was released.
So, this is the case where the house is, oh, I went by there.
House, it's 1986.
It's a beautiful house.
I'm sure it is.
Very well landscaped, it's on farm build.
And how many houses have been sold?
Uh, I think this is the first time.
That's why I said.
So, that's why it's, it's being caught. And my suggestion was that, that we take and, uh, we create a release, covenant release for the property, get the names of the, um, of it, that was.
No, I have a certificate of lot release.
Who's, who's requesting it?
An attorney.
The buyer's attorney?
They didn't specify.
Why don't you ask him to prepare the release and then you, you can sign it? He's getting paid the big bucks. Or she. But we're certain it was really, I mean, I mean.
All the farm hills have been built and released and the road is in good shape, it's nothing that's. It's about, uh, about five houses up on the right.
Oh, it's home, it's.
Yeah.
Either it was built without the release or it, the release was done and it wasn't recorded, so.
I don't, I don't know again.
And there's nothing in our, in those files, those are, those are more than, those are like 30 years old, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
30 years old.
That's before I, that, that property's been there since I was in high, it's high school, if not before.
Yeah, it's before I was born.
Really?
Yeah, that's been before I was on the planning board. Before you were born.
I would just suggest that they draft, you know.
Draft up a covenant release.
Who's your attorney, who's your attorney, Elizabeth?
Glenny.
Last name is.
Last name's attorney, it's Attorney Glenny.
Yep, he's my attorney.
So, 978.
I want to make a mo, uh, a motion, motion is in order.
You'll be able to.
The motion is in order to allow Elizabeth to sign a covenant release for, um, for 33 Farm Hill Road.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. That way, we're covered, it's in the minutes.
And after Stephanie and I clean everything, maybe we're going to find miraculous.
Yeah.
Are you taking too long, motion?
Motion.
Motion made and seconded, two again, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Motion carries.